I will now call to order the September 22, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, thank you Chair. First, our staff support today, County Council Stephen Madicore, Clerk to the Board Tony Mayernick. Apparently on Zoom is a roll call. On Zoom Commissioner Fisher, are you here?
Here.
All right, thank you. In the room Commissioner Savas?
Present.
Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual time. I would like to remind our participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board. Gary, can you introduce the next item?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, we'll invite Housing Commissioner Anne Lindstra to join via Zoom. Is she here? Tony?
Commissioner Lindstra, are you present?
I am on board.
Great, welcome Commissioner Lindstra. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Item 1, Approval of Housing Authority Resolution 1970 Approving Policy Changes to the Family Self-Sufficiency Action Plan. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of Housing Authority Board Order 1971 to Write Off Uncollectible Debt for the First Quarter of Fiscal Year 2023. Total uncollectible debt is $4,888.76. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval to Apply for Family Self-Sufficiency Grant Funding from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Anticipated grant award is approximately $160,000. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval to Apply for Stability Voucher Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Anticipated grant award is approximately $300,000. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval to Apply for Additional Veteran Administration Supportive Housing Funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Anticipated grant award is approximately $300,000. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off this consent agenda? Seeing none, Commissioner Lindstra, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly. I move we approve the consent agenda for the Housing Authority.
Second.
Commissioner Lindstra has moved approval for the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Savas has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Lindstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much Commissioner Lindstra for showing today. We appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and convene as a Development Agency Board. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Development Agency Public Hearing. This is an approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County Development Agency Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Supplemental appropriations total $350,000. Funding is through tax increment financing. No county general funds are involved. David Queener is the Development Agency Manager. Welcome David, and go ahead.
Good morning. As Gary mentioned, I'm here before you today seeking approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County Development Agency Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 22-23. Each fiscal year, it is necessary to reduce or allocate additional sources of revenue and appropriate additional expenditures in order to more accurately reflect the changes required by the agency. Resolution before you today reflects such changes in keeping with a legally accurate budget. Historically, the agency has had large capital construction budgets within the Clackamas Town Center urban renewal area. When budget estimates were developed for Fiscal Year 22-23, it was anticipated that the Clackamas Regional Center Mobility Improvement Project would be complete and final payments would be made in Fiscal Year 21-22. The anticipated final payments were included in the year-end estimates for 21-22 budget, and only minimal funds were budgeted for Fiscal Year 22-23. This was an unplanned expense at the time of budgeting last year, and there's now a need to recognize an additional fund balance and move some contingency into our capital line to make sure enough funds are appropriated to cover the final payments to the vendors on this project. The effect of this resolution is an increase in revenues and appropriations of $350,000. With that, staff respectfully recommends the Board adopt the resolution in keeping with a legally accurate budget. Thank you.
Thank you Dave. Do Commissioners have any questions or comments on this?
I have one.
Yeah, Commissioner Scholl?
Mr. Queener, for the people listening today, this had to do with the Sunnyside Road Improvement Project?
Correct.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to testify just on this particular item? I see no one. Tony, do we have anybody registered online?
Chair Smith, at this time, I do not have anyone registered online. If there is anyone who would like to speak on this topic, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Chair Smith, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. I will entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the resolution for the Clackamas County Development Agency Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-2023 with appropriations totaling $350,000.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved approval for the resolution for a supplemental budget. Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you Chair. Next is our two public hearings. The first public hearing is Approval of a Clackamas County Supplemental Budget Resolution for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Supplemental appropriations total $11,476,909. Funding is through the beginning fund balance, federal and state operating grants, charges for services, and intra-fund transfers, including $136,632 in county general funds. Sandra Montoya is the Budget Manager and will present.
Good morning Commissioner and Chair. Sandra Montoya, Budget Manager for Clackamas County. As Gary said, we've got adjustments, supplemental budget adjustments of 11.476 million before you. We've got three adjustments in the general fund and six across other funds. Supplemental budget adjustments are required before over expenditure in the spending limits is allowed, and so we've got before you a mix, and I can go into those specifically if you'd like, or I can be available for questions.
Do Commissioners have qualifying questions for the presenter on this budget item? I think that's it. Elizabeth Comfort came before us yesterday and walked us through what this involved, and I don't think we have questions. I will now open the meeting for public testimony on this item and take in-person testimony first. Is there anybody here who wishes to testify on this supplemental budget item? Seeing no one in the room, Tony, do we have anybody online?
Chair Smith, at this time, I do not have any registered participants. If there is anyone who would like to speak on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Chair Smith, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the resolution for the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-23 with appropriations totaling $11,476,909.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savas has moved a resolution for the supplemental budget for Fiscal Year 22-23. Commissioner Scholl, second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is also a public hearing, Approval of an Application for COVID-19 Impact Assistance for Childcare Grant from Business Oregon. Grant value is $250,000. Funding is through Business Oregon. This is a requirement as part of the grant application that you have a public hearing. We have from, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, Health Housing and Human Services. Would you please introduce yourself?
Danny Sam Thomas, Senior Program Planner with Children, Family, and Community Connections.
Please go ahead.
We are asking the Commissioners to hold this public hearing, to take any public comment, and approve our application for these COVID-19 emergency funds. These funds will support up to 50 families for three months of childcare scholarships that will go directly to existing providers in the community to help stabilize them and stabilize the family.
Thank you very much. Do Commissioners have any clarifying questions or comments at this time?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I just like, are we still under the Governor's Emergency Status for COVID-19?
None of the emergency status applies for childcare any longer. They are now optional.
Okay.
Interesting. Good question.
I'm sure this is going to go for a good cause, I don't doubt that, and I was just wondering if, how long this will help people, and if they'll be able to pick up the slack when the funding ceases.
Our hope is that three months of funding helps them get connected to other things that they need, such as applying for state subsidy, getting access to Head Start slots, and our team will be able to help them do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first.
I do have some written testimony, Chair, as well.
Pardon me?
I have written testimony as well.
And how long is it?
I just have two different, very short letters.
Could you, of course, submit those for the record?
I will.
I assume they're letters in support?
They are.
Would you like to mention who wrote those letters and then submit them to the clerk for, to keep in our records?
Absolutely. I have a letter from Beth Unversat at Oregon Ask, the after-school network, in support, and I also have a letter from Nani's Village, a childcare center in Canvey. I am anticipating by the end of the day also a letter from Clackamas Workforce Partnership.
Okay, good. We'll just submit those letters to Tony. Tony, do you want paper copies or do you want electronic copies?
Electronic would be preferable, Chair.
Okay, could you do that later today?
Absolutely.
And why don't you just do all three at the same time when you get them?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate those letters of support. Tony, do we have anybody online who would like to testify?
Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone registered to speak on this topic. If there is anyone who would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Chair, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Yes, Mr. Scholl?
I, this, I'm happy to see this application. We have a big problem with a shortage of childcare in the county, and anything we can do to alleviate some of that problem is most appreciated. Thank you.
It certainly is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the application for the COVID-19 Impact Assistance for Childcare Grant from Business Oregon.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved that we approve the application for the COVID-19 Impact Assistance for Childcare Grant from Business Oregon. Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Enthusiastically aye.
Excuse me, Commissioner Fisher?
Enthusiastically aye.
She said enthusiastically aye.
Okay.
Her connection is breaking up, yeah.
I would expect nothing less from you, Commissioner Fisher. Thank you very much.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much for coming forward with this. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. It is a long one. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected Officials, Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Counsel, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution to Correct Technical Errors in Board Order 2022-36, a Final Order to Form a Joint Water and Sanitary Authority Relating to the Oak Lodge Water Service Authority. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Settlement Agreement with George L. Youssef to Resolve Litigation Related to a Motor Vehicle Collision Involving a County-owned Vehicle Operated by a County Employee. Settlement Value is $165,000. Funding is through the County Risk Fund. No county general funds are involved. Technology Services, Item 1, Approval of a Board Order Authorizing Issuance of a Purchase Order for Aquia Cloud Platform Services from Karasoff Technology Corporation. Purchase Order Value is $214,917.87 for three years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Transportation and Development, Item 1, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro for Removal of Abandoned Recreational Vehicles, Collection of Bulky Waste at Affordable Housing Communities, and Supplementary Garbage Pickup Serving Unhoused Community Members. Agreement Value is $300,000. Funding is through state allocated funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose of Acquisition Purpose for Acquisition of Rights of Way, Easements, and Fee Property, and Authorizing Good Faith Negotiations and Condemnation Actions for the Redland Road Turn Lanes at Ferguson and Bradley Project. Right of Way Budget is $277,428. Total Project Value is $2,210,310. Funding is through the Community Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of a Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose for Acquisition of Rights of Way, Easement, and Fee Property, and Authorizing Good Faith Negotiations and Condemnation Actions for the Woodcock Creek at Grim Road Bridge Replacement Project. Right of Way Budget is $23,520. Total Project Value is $985,071. Funding is through the County Road Fund and Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Restoration Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Amirio Design LLC for the Eagle Creek-Duce Road Intersection Improvement Project. Contract Value is $252,158.28. Funding is through the Community Road Fund and System Development Charges. No county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval of a Restoration, Approval of a Resolution to Apply for Accounting Opportunity Grant for Roadway Improvement Project at Frayer Park. Grant Value is $185,000. Funding is through Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services, Item 1, Approval of Grant Amendment Extending Duration, Increasing Funding, and Adding Services to a Federal Subrecipient Agreement with Hoodland Service Center for the Provision of Vaccine Access, Nutrition Services, Health Promotion, Energy Assistance, and Transportation Services to Eligible Individuals. Amendment Value is $90,028 for one year. Grant Value is now $184,348 for two years. Funding is through the Older Americans Act, Federal Transportation Administration, Rite Connection, Trimate, and HEAT Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of Amendment Increasing Funding and Making Administrative Changes to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance State Health Insurance Assistance Program. Amendment Value is $13,500. Agreement Value is now $61,500. Funding is through Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Housing Our Families Program to Provide Us Housing Assistance Supportive Services and Case Management to Homeless Households. Grant Value is $182,644 plus $45,661 in Matching Funds. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Match funded through Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the HOPE One Leasing Program to Provide Housing Assistance Supportive Services and Case Management for Homeless Households. Grant Value is $304,609 plus $76,152 in Matching Funds. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Match funded through the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Coordinated Housing Access System to Provide Referral Services to Homeless Individuals. Grant Value is $31,928 plus $7,982 in Matching Funds. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Match funded through federal community development block grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 6, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Rent Well Rapid Rehousing Program to Provide Rental Assistance, Education, Case Management, and Supportive Services to Homeless Individuals. Grant Value is $129,405 plus $32,351 in Matching Funds. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Match funded through Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 7, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the HOPE Two Program to Provide Housing Assistance Supportive Services and Case Management for Homeless Households. Grant Value is $79,773 plus $19,943 in Matching Funds. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Match funded through federal community services block grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 8, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Housing Our Heroes Program to Provide Housing Assistance Supportive Services and Case Management to Homeless Households with at least one person who has served in the military. Grant Value is $366,681 plus $91,670 in Matching Funds. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Match funded through Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services and $25,000 in budgeted county general funds. Item 9, Approval to Submit the Annual Consolidated Application for the Continuum of Care Program with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Total requested funding is $4,497,797. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with matching funds from federal, state, county, local, and private sources, including $25,000 in budgeted county general funds for the Housing Our Heroes Program. Item 10, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement with, for the Community Development Block Grant. Grant Value is $22,3267. Funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item 11, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement for the Home Investment Partnerships Grant. Grant Value is $1133,026. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item 12, Approval of a Federal Grant Agreement for the Emergency Solutions Grant. Grant Value is $192,180. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Well, I didn't calculate the exact amount of dollars, but literally there are millions and millions and millions of dollars that staff has identified to help supply services to our many programs. I want to thank them for doing such a great job on their applications for that. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Savas has seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Chair, I'd like to, for the people who are watching this on video later on, it's might be overwhelming, all the different things, grants that were read to you this morning, and if you want to learn more about the details on each one of these grants, any item on the consent agenda, you can go to the Clackamas County website, a Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, and then there you'll find the documentation. Click on the green text, and you can read for days and days like we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that exciting invitation, Commissioner Scholl.
Chair, I might, I might just add that, let the folks know out there as well that on Tuesdays typically we review these one by one, and if there's any questions or details need to be clarified, that we do that on our work sessions, so.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Savas, for that too. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item? Nope, we did that. Tony, go ahead and take the poll, please.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health.
Next is the Board of Health Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Board of Health Consent Agenda, one item, Approval of a Board Order Appointing a Local Public Health Administrator. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off this consent agenda? Seeing none. Any comments on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Board of Health Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savas has moved for approval of the Board of Health Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Board of Health and convene as a Water Environment Services Board.
Next is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services, Item 1, Approval of a Settlement Agreement and Mutual Release of All Claims with Brown &amp; Caldwell Incorporated, Slaton Constructors Incorporated, and APSCO LLC. Settlement Value is $385,000. Funding is through participating parties. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Construction Contract with JQ Construction Incorporated for the Stormwater Inlet Replacement Project. Contract Value is $353,121. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Construction Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Report in Lieu of Audit Form for Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Report in Lieu of Audit Forms for Tri-County Service District. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval of Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Report in Lieu of Audit Forms for Clackamas County Service District Number 1. Clack, no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off of this consent agenda?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to remove, or at least discuss, Agenda Item A, the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Go ahead, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I just want to just... Yeah, I just want to just acknowledge that I was not aware that in our negotiations that we were subject to a non-disclosure agreement until yesterday. That was not discussed in executive session. I thought that, that, that it should have been because in essence it, it's censuring our ability to speak on the issue. Therefore, because of that restriction, I don't have much else to say.
Any further comment on this, Stephen?
For me?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Does any commissioner wish to remove anything? I will entertain a motion.
So I'm sorry, so, my apologies. So Commissioner Savas asked to remove item A.
But I thought you wanted for discussion.
And/or, yeah, and/or discussion, so I've.
Do you want it removed or not?
Nope.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I apologize.
That's okay. Point of clarification is always good. I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes three, one. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Service Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of our consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as a BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email your submissions for public comment to bcc@clackamas.us and these will be accepted as part of the record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Anybody who wants to testify, you can still fill out a card, set it there and come up and talk about whatever you want. And I do have a blue card from Mark Elliott. Please come forward, sir. State your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Mark Elliott. I live in the Oak Grove portion of Clackamas County. And I'm here this morning as a board member of the Oak Grove Community Council and task force member for the Oak Grove and Gladstone Community Project. During the Oak Grove Community Council meeting held on Wednesday, August 24th, the community council voted to approve a resolution in support of the Oak Lodge Library project at the Concord School in NCPRD headquarters. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, bring your microphone just a little closer.
Okay, I'll do that.
And you know, don't be afraid to be loud. Everybody else is.
Okay. I will do my best. Thank you. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So a library board force, a library task force meeting was held on Thursday, September 8th to allow the task force in the community to, the opportunity to review and comment on the latest design progress made by the architectural and engineering team. As shared in the meeting, the current design phase for the library is expected to be completed in May of next year, followed by a bid in construction phase. At this time, the BCC has committed funds to complete the design phase but has put construction on hold for an indefinite period of time. The Oak Grove Community Council reaffirms our full support for the Oak Lodge Library and the design endorsed by the Library Task Force. We urge the BCC to fully fund the library project through its completion without delay. We encourage the BCC to allocate appropriate and available ARPA funds and other funds to ensure that construction of both the Gladstone and Oak Lodge libraries happen concurrently. Building them at the same time with the same contractor will save money. Constructing them both as soon as possible will help fulfill previous BCC commitments to build both libraries per option A of the Gladstone Settlement Agreement from February 2018. The Oak Grove Community Council sees this project as the county's first priority in bringing equity to the underserved needs of the Oak Grove community and commits itself to continued county engagement and observation of progress through the completion of this significant community project. I also wish to thank the county for their support and participation in the Oak Grove Trolley Trail Fest that was held on Saturday, July 16th. County Public Services, including the Office of Sustainability and Recycling, County Parks and Transportation Departments, the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Department, the Oak Lodge Water Services District and the Clackamas County Fire District, were held, held informational and interactive booths at the fest. The event was attended by over 5,000 people, far surpassing our best hopes for community participation. The organizing committee's primary goal of bringing our local community together was a great success. The fest's success would not have been possible without the assistance and support of the Planning and Transportation Department staff. As the Chair of the Fest Organizing Committee, I wish to offer my heartfelt thanks to the county and staff for their support and assistance. Thank you.
Mr. Elliott, thank you for acknowledging our staff. They do work very hard at a lot of these issues and try to be responsive as possible to the citizens' needs. I want to make one slight correction in your testimony. Our vote was not to suspend the library indefinitely. It was not indefinitely. It was for a period up to one year. And so, just, just know that. And when was that taken, Gary?
I think it was August of this year.
August of this year.
This year, 2020.
Up to one year. And we are organizing our funds, looking forward, and there's been, you know, we've had a lot of response from the folks out there wanting this library. We understand that very much. There was an editorial written one week comparing this to the courthouse saying that we're using ARPA dollars to build the courthouse. We are not using ARPA dollars to build the courthouse. I just want to make sure folks listening understand that. We are setting priorities moving forward, deciding how much. We don't even know how much the library is going to cost yet. Frankly, a lot of our projects do not, we don't have a final number on them. Projects that we've approved. In fact, we have a project that should have been finished by now. We've had trouble with the contractor. It's caused a nine-month delay because the contractor was somehow deemed unworthy or inappropriate, had to find another contractor. We opened it up for bid, could not get a builder to bid on it, increased the amount $200,000, had many, many people look at it, finally had one bidder, and then now we come to find out we're almost $500,000 over budget for the nine-month delay and so forth and so forth. So this board is being as prudent as possible, so we do, trying to avoid these types of problems. We initially decided to go for a one-year delay in order for prices to stabilize and labor force to stabilize, and I think it will work to everybody's best interest. Thank you very much for coming forward. I appreciate your volunteerism and working for the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the room would like to come up? You don't even have to have a card, you can come up, fill it out later. Okay. Tony, do we have anybody online?
Chair Smith, I have a number of people registered. I will start with Thomas Griswold. Sir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
My name is Tom Griswold. Good morning, Chair Smith, County Commissioners. I'm a resident of the Damascus community and Chair of the Damascus CPO. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not on behalf of the CPO. I'd like to address Metro's Urban Growth Boundary Land Exchange proposal. They were at our CPO meeting on September 8th. Personally, I'm in favor of the land exchange. Anecdotally, even though I'm not talking for the CPO, there are various members of the Damascus community that have varying opinions on just about every issue, but a vast majority are in favor of having their property removed from the urban growth boundary and placed into the urban reserve. I hope that Commissioner Shaw will convey this during the Metro Policy Advisory Committee meeting on September 28th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Griswold. Tony, who's next?
Next will be Thelma Hagen-Miller. Thelma, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. My name is Thelma Hagen-Miller. I live in the Oak Grove unincorporated area of county, and I'm just calling to support what Mark said about the Concord Library. I am personally looking forward to the implementation of the park design that goes along with the two buildings there, so I'm just stating my support again. Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma. Haven't heard from you in a while. Tony, who's next?
My last registered participant will be Bob Osbeck. Sir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Mr. Osbeck, you are muted. Mr. Osbeck, you are still muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can now, sir.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I am Bob Osbeck. I live in Jennings Lodge. I'm a Clackamas County Library Patron and support our county commissioners fully funding the Oak Lodge Gladstone branches of the One Library, Two Branch Agreement for a 21st Century. A great thing about a modern library is that it offers so much more than books and media. Libraries are being reinvented in innovative, imaginative ways to provide offerings like meet the author events, music, multicultural storytelling and poetry events, more classes such as art products, projects or food growing instruction, a place for children and teens to gather, or something as sweet and simple as reading books. These are just a few of the ways our new Oak Lodge Gladstone Library branches can enhance our community for generations to come. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Osbeck. Tony, anybody else?
At this time, I do not have any other registered participants. If there is anyone who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use my time to share good news about the staff and programs at Clackamas County. Today, I'll share with you the following. The permits and planning staff within our Department of Transportation and Development received praise for their excellent customer service. Resident Allison wrote in, "From my first encounter with the staff in the lobby, everyone I have interacted with has been so friendly and helpful. This is my first and probably only time as a homeowner doing a project. To come in and be treated with such patience and kindness was a wonderful experience." And she mentioned our staff by name, Jason Jackson, Kelsey McNaul and Brittany Morrison in DTD. Thank you to our staff for delivering outstanding service, as always. Next, Stafford Hamlet member Rick Cook wrote to me and wanted to thank our staff for their support of the Stafford Hamlet Family Fest. And Rick wrote, "The Stafford Hamlet wanted to be sure the wonderful work of county staff was acknowledged. The Stafford Hamlet Family Fest had over 350 community members attend, and that would not have been possible without the support and guidance of staff from Public and Government Affairs and Water Environment Services, and Water Environment Services provided the restrooms." He also acknowledged our staff Stacy Davenport, Todd Logan and Chris Lyons from Public and Government Affairs. So thank you to our team for their great work. And the Stafford Hamlet is, always does a great job with the Family Fest. Finally, Clackamas County Deputy District Attorney Alex Hayes was honored as the Oregon District Attorneys Association Wildlife Prosecutor of the Year. This award recognizes those who demonstrate a commitment to preserving Oregon's natural resources and who excel with subject matter expertise, communication with partner agencies and legal advocacy. Alex is the first Clackamas County employee to ever win this award, and so we are grateful and recognize Alex for his good work and our district attorney's team. That is my update today, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know that there was such a thing as a Wildlife Prosecutor Award for the Year. You never know what you're going to learn, right?
Yes.
That's one of the exciting things about this job. Thank you, Gary, for all that. We will now move on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Fisher has left to the day to attend to other business, so up first is Commissioner Savas.
Great, thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I want to thank the folks that called in today about the, about the library matter, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we will get where we want to get, but I, I cannot ever help but thinking about how long the journey has been and how many volunteer hours and time have been spent on this. You know, a couple administrators, staff assistants and so forth. And also want to acknowledge that the Library District Advisory Committee, otherwise known as LDAC, also represents all the cities, all the libraries in all the cities around the county, that they have been very supportive through all of this. And let you know that if you're listening, I missed the meetings. We have, we've been on hold for a long time since COVID, so I don't know why we're, LDAC has not met on a regular basis, but I really appreciate some of those folks that have reached out and acknowledged their support for completing the library system, which includes the Gladstone, Oak Lodge, One Library, Two Locations Agreement. And also thank the folks in Gladstone for their support and understanding in the delays that they've experienced as well. So the other thing I want to mention, I keep on hearing a lot of kudos, and I want to just acknowledge all the Fire District folks and people that joined in and helped in the last fire emergency out at MacGyver Park. All hands were on deck. We got a hold, we got our arms around that and got that contained within short order. Unfortunately, there was one loss of property. That's unfortunate, but just keep on hearing a lot of kudos for all the people that chipped in, the volunteers, the, the Fire Districts, including Clackamas and all the locals at Takeda, TVFNR, everyone who chipped in. So much, much gratitude here, and that's all I have for today, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County, and thank you for those of you who have presented to the board this morning. I want to say a special thank you to the Oak Grove Community Council. I know you've worked tirelessly on these libraries. I also want to say thanks to Mr. Mark Elliott. I saw him on Tuesday night at the County Parks Advisory Board Meeting. And for everybody in Clackamas County who is an active participant in our government, I really appreciate that. To Mr. Thomas Griswold, I will definitely take your comments to heart at the 28 September Impact Meeting. And again, Thelma Hagen-Miller, we always appreciate hearing from you. And Bob Osbeck, thank you for your, your input this morning. On state legislature issues, anything that happens in Salem affects this county, and I want to encourage every resident of Clackamas County to not wait for your voter pamphlet to come out, to get involved in issues, but to get online, look at what's going to be on the ballot in November and take some time to learn about it. Why is your participation important? It's important because currently Oregon, and whatever happens in Oregon happens to Clackamas County, has the third highest home prices in the United States, only behind California and Hawaii. We have the number five most expensive cost of living in the USA. We pay the second highest gas prices in America, only behind California. We pay the eighth highest income tax, and we pay the second highest corporate tax. And why is it important that everybody become involved and work through your state rep and state senator to effect the action in Salem? It's because the more voices that support an issue or the more voices that fight an issue. issue, the better off Clackamas County will be. So please get involved before the November election. On those of you who are concerned about the short-term rental issue, Commissioner Savas and I met this morning. We're going to have another meeting next week, and I just want to let you know that we are working on that STR issue, and I ask you to just be patient a little bit longer. On achieving and celebrating excellence, I had the privilege last week to shake the hands of employees of Clackamas County who celebrated their anniversaries with the county in July, August, and September. These employees celebrated from five years to 35 years of service to Clackamas County and its residents, and I really appreciate the hard work. Like I mentioned to them, tonight at six o'clock, summer's over, fall begins, and we're going to have those mornings where it's dark and cold and getting out of bed to come to work is going to be tough, but I know that they'll be here on time. I appreciate your work, and thanks again, Administrator Schmidt, for the privilege to be there, to do that. On tolling, this is an issue that is not resolved yet, and I ask you all to keep up the pressure, work through your state reps and state senators. There are people who support the people of Clackamas County who are looking at alternatives to tolling and support those people. On the Clackamas County Parks Advisory Board Meeting on Tuesday night, again, I had a really nice time there at the meeting at Barton Park, a beautiful park. And I like to remind the people of Clackamas County that your County Parks manages some over 900 acres of parkland, so at some 20 sites throughout the county. Make sure you take some time to get to know some of these parks. I had not been to Barton Park for 35 years, and it's really a nice place. So get online, see what's available, and take the kids to the park for a picnic real soon. Let's see, what else we have here of interest? Okay, one more thing. You've heard me talk many times about crime, and we want Clackamas County to be safe, secure for our people. As a reminder, it wasn't too long ago in Portland that they cut, defunded $12 million out of their police force, cut 100 police jobs, positions off the roster. It resulted in the highest rate of increase of homicides in any American city in 2021, and also an explosion of other crimes. So I bring this up to you. I ask you all, when you see a city police officer, or you see one of our county sheriff deputies, stop and say thank you. Also, if you are familiar with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Online Crime Reporting, if you see a crime, of course, if it's something you need to call 911 on, do that. If it's another crime that's been committed that you have evidence on, if you go on to the sheriff's website to the online crime reporting and report what you have seen, it helps the sheriff's department formulate their, their plan for sending out patrols of that area. You'll help them out quite a little bit. And I think that's all I have. Again, I appreciate everybody who testified this morning and those who called in, and for everybody in Clackamas County who takes an active role in their CPO, their city, and the county. Thank you very much for your time and effort.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Last night, I attended the Clackamas County Fair Board Meeting. Have a few statistics to report. They have not compiled all the revenues, but by all accounts, the fair attendance was a record levels. There were 54,954 people in attendance. That is 1% above the 2019 levels, which was the previous highest. They also had 21,195 attendees, and they were sold out for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, which is very good. They also had 600 people download the app on their phones, and they are looking at that as a way to track and get information out. They are feeling good about the revenue increases over next year. Almost all of 2023 is booked at the fair. They have outside venues occasionally come in and book. The Hair Fest is one of them, which is growing hugely. With that in mind, coming up in October is the Canby Haunt, the Halloween celebration, starting October 7th going through October 29th at the Horse Barn. And they're going to redo that, take your kids out, have a fun, save time, and there's a little bit of a charge to that, although I'm really not sure what that is. Canby Haunt at the fairgrounds, October 7th through 29th. Regarding an update on the multipurpose slash livestock barn at the fair, they are currently at the City of County Planner's Office. They've applied for a conditional use permit in order to instruct it because the zoning on the fairgrounds is residential. It's the same zoning as the school districts have in Canby, too. So any new construction, for instance, a gymnasium or any, would have to go through a conditional use permit. And the folks in Canby are considering a new zone called PF for Public Facilities, which I find interesting. It'll probably help their planning process a little, go a little bit faster. You don't have to apply for a conditional use permit and jump through all the hoops to do that. They're proceeding on that. They're going to run a three-phase power off Fourth Street is one of the updates last night. For all you construction junkies, that's really important. That's about all I have to report on the fair. Next month, this Board of County Commissioners will be meeting jointly with the Fair Board at the Canby Fairgrounds. That meeting will be posted. It's about 4:30 in the afternoon, if anybody is interested in that. Next up, I would like to inform the board and the, and this, the public that Commissioner Fisher will be taking my place on the Tri-County Planning Body Group that meets monthly to discuss the supporting housing services measure that Metro had put out. And it's a tax, income tax paid into that. Regarding the MacGyver Park, it's really interesting. There were a lot of response to that. I understand that fire trucks came as far as Nahalem on the coast to help with that. And I think it's because the fire trucks are a little bit smaller and more nimble to get into these areas. Many jurisdictions responded from the coast. Also, there was a huge, huge public effort of folks who own construction equipment, logging equipment, have their own water tenders, who went in and put in, you know, a fire break, which is now, one of the citizens told me, "Mmm, MacGyver now has a new road in their area." And it kept the fire from spreading, which was very good, very good. And I'm thankful to the people who stepped up and helped fight this fire. And they don't expect kudos. They don't expect to be reimbursed for the efforts. They're just doing what's right for the public good, and I'm very heartfelt by that. Yesterday, we had the Metro Counselors and Council President Lynn Peterson and others come forward to talk about the UGB expansion, or trade, or whatever you want to call it in Clackamas County. And I will make, and I made this point to the Metro Counselors, and I will repeat it to you folks here. Clackamas County will no longer be viewed as a donor county in land exchanges, so other counties can profit from what our designations are in this county. We need to be equally reimbursed, and we need to be allowed to expand for housing in our county and the siding of businesses because that is what our citizens deserve to have. Thank you very much. Seeing no other business before this board, we are adjourned.